All this meeting in order, everybody could rise.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Why is that moved up a little bit?
Yeah, I did move up.
I like that though.
Startle me.
What are we doing?
Startle me.
I'm gonna fix it up.
Yeah. All right, um, here we are, 2023. Um, and say our new auditor, Madam Auditor Karen Martin and her chief deputy Ryan Kubal, is that right?
Yep.
So, um, welcome, and if we could get a roll call for me, Madam Auditor, that'd be great.
Jeremy Rivas?
Here.
Mike Justin?
Here.
Andy Bozak?
Here.
Mike Brookner?
Here.
Sylvia Graham?
Here.
Rick Sims?
Present.
Red Stone?
Present.
We've got a court. So we'll go right into election of officers. So, um, we'll start with President, Vice President, and...
I'll nominate, if I may, I'd like to nominate Jeremy Rivas as President for 2023.
There's a motion on the floor.
I can.
There's a second, a motion of second on the floor for myself, Jeremy Rivas, to stay President. Are there any other motions?
I'd make the motion for Andy Bozak and Jeremy Rivas.
Andy Bozak for President and Jeremy Rivas for Vice President.
We'll go one at a time, so President.
President, thank you.
There's a motion, there's a motion on the floor for Andy Bozak as President. Any other motions? All right, so we'll have a little election here then, um, so if there's no others, no others? All right, so we'll just, um...
Thank you.
Madam Auditor, we'll just do a roll call, and each person will just state who they're voting for for, um, President. So as we go down, if you guys would just state who you're voting for.
President Redstone?
Andy Bozak?
Rick Sims?
Jeremy.
Sylvia Graham?
Jeremy Rivas.
Mike Brookner?
Rivas.
Andy Bozak?
Myself.
Mike Justin?
Uh, Jeremy Rivas.
And Jeremy.
I'll vote for myself.
It's five to two.
All right, so I'll stay here, I guess. Um, open the floor then for Vice President of County Council for 2023. Any nominations for Vice President?
I nominate Redstone.
I'll second that.
Motion on second for Redstone for Vice President. Any other nominations?
I nominate Andy Bozak.
There's another nomination for Andy Bozak for Vice President. For any other nominations? Seeing none, then, um, we'll do the same thing.
Do you have a second?
No, we've never really required a second. So yeah, Madam Auditor, if you could just go down the roll again and state who you vote for.
Mike Brookner?
Bozak.
Andy Bozak?
Stone. Dude, you gotta fix my microphone.
Uh, Stone.
Jeremy Rivas?
Uh, Redstone.
Sylvia Graham?
Redstone, please.
Rick Sims?
Andy Bozak.
And Redstone?
Myself.
Five to two, Redstone.
All right, there we go. So we've got some officers here for the year. Roll right into the Attorney's Contract. You guys got this a little bit earlier today, um, so...
I can't move without having feedback.
Way to jump right in, Red.
Hey.
Uh, so you guys, um, had a conversation with Harold, you know, continuing on. Harold, I don't know how long it's been. Two years, seven years?
Seven years.
Seven years? Um, so, um, Vice President Justin had requested, I think, the information going back, um, you know, sometime of what he bills beyond his retainer. And, you know, me and Mike then talked, and it just seemed like, you know, average and out and see, so he doesn't have to bill monthly, you know, we've all kind of asked him to do a few things here and there. So I think, I don't know if it's in here, so we just, you know, kind of took, um, the average monthly, and instead of billing as we request him to do things, um, we just put the average cost in it, you know, basically per month and for the entire year. So I think this is, if you look at page two, the contract would be nineteen thousand, eight hundred dollars, and we can make him work, and we should make him work as hard as he can every time, since he's not gonna bill us hourly now.
So that, that foregoes any other costs?
Yeah, so any other costs. So instead of, you know, having a retainer and then for just normal, you know, monthly stuff, and then he would bill outside of that retainer for things that were outside kind of the normal scope, we're just gonna include it all, kind of look back at his average billing over the last couple of years. We didn't include this one because it's been way down, but, um, this has kind of been what we've been paying him, and, you know, the thought, I think, would be then, if there's anything really, really, really crazy that he's gotta dig into, then maybe we can have that discussion with him, you know, if he thinks that should be billed out. But this, hopefully he doesn't have to bill, and it just, you know...
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
Now, second the motion.
Motion of second on the floor, any discussion?
So was this the contract that we were set? Is that why you're explaining that?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I know I saw kind of a low retainer, a low hourly fee, so I was kind of like, wow, that's...
That, well, originally, the, the contract has been, since I've been there, and I think five to seven years before that, it was always a flat fee at a thousand a month. And then for anything over and above the ordinary course and scope, it would be billed at a hundred and thirty, which is very low.
Yes.
Um, but truth be told, I, you, we all, none of us get into public service for the money, obviously, and I enjoy the, the, the position, and I enjoy working with everyone, and I, I think it's important. Um, I, I'm on board with the change. It is essentially equivalent to what has been paid previously.
Gotcha.
Uh, it's just this way, I won't have to keep track of every, um, I don't have to hourly bill, uh, I could just do a flat fee every month. I think it'll be easier for the county, there's more certainty in terms of, uh, if there's anything extraordinary that comes through. So for those reasons, I...
No, it makes sense. I, I just was, what, that's, that was my question.
Any other discussion? It's contract, can we get a roll call, Madam Auditor, on... Get you used to us a little bit, we'll call on you a few times, thank you.
Sylvia Graham?
Yes.
Mike Brookner?
Yes.
Rick Sims?
Yes.
Redstone?
Yes.
Andy Bozak?
Yes.
Mike Justin?
Yes.
And Jeremy Rivas?
Yes. All right, seven zero, pass. So the next one up is a surveyor agreement. So this is, um, yeah, um, Kevin's agreement, um, the surveyor's agreement, which I think Kevin might have, he might have been the original surveyor of the county when it was, uh...
I don't think so.
No?
But I was the first one that agreed not to practice privately and have the conflicts of interest that affected all of us in the past. I might be the only one in the state.
Really?
I don't know many that would be willing to do it. Because as Harold said, we don't do this to make money. We shouldn't.
So this is, we get, we get Kevin all to ourselves, he doesn't go out and, you know, take half the day out to go survey on a personal, you know, business, so this is what he's been bringing to us for quite some time, so again, is it an agreement?
I make the motion, and we accept the contract as written.
Second, the motion of second on the floor, any discussion, questions, comments? Can we get one more roll call for this agreement, Madam Auditor?
Redstone?
Yes.
Rick Sims?
Yes.
Sylvia Graham?
Yes.
Mike Brookner?
Yes.
Andy Bozak?
Hi.
Mike Justin?
Yes.
Jeremy Rivas?
Yes. All right, seven zero.
Please, Kevin, thank you.
Thank you, for sure. All right, jump into our appointments. Here, let me put this one. Sorry. So... It's like we've got community corrections, I think these are our appointments in front of you guys, our own appointments.
Yeah.
Right now, I think we've got, um, I think we have one person on it, Brookner, and I think we said Harold if he wanted to go, so there's a community corrections. Is anybody else interested in that, is our appointment to that board? Seeing none, um, I'm just gonna stick with Mike, you there, you good? All right, perfect, NERC. It's like, um, Mr. Justin's on that one.
I've, I've been on NERC, but if there's someone that would like to step into that role, uh, instead, that, that would be fine with me.
Mike, I'm not sure anybody's volunteering.
When do they meet?
Uh, it's during the day.
During the day? Which I would have no problem with.
Generally, the morning.
Coming up. Does any boards that need to meet during the day or in the morning?
I would, I would suggest that that'd be a good, good role for you, Red.
So is that, did I hear right, is that, um, uh, Red, you're gonna take over NERC?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right, there you go. Anybody else? Want to jump in, all right, perfect. Plan Commission? Greg?
Yeah, I'd like to stay if I can.
All right, anybody else interested? The Cycling and Waste District? Sylvia?
I've been on that, yeah, I'll stay on it.
Anybody else interested in that?
If someone else wants it, they can have it.
No chance, Sylvia. EMA, we get two, it's like, uh, well, it looks like we might have had three on there, Graham, Sims, and Brookner.
Yeah, I, I do, I wanna pull myself off of that.
Graham?
I'll stay on that.
Okay. So you got Mike and...
I can stay on it.
Sims still interested, anybody else? Okay, keep going, um... We got, uh, Porter County Council on Aging?
I'll stay on that.
Our Bulldog, Sylvia Graham. Anybody else interested in that? All right, that's a good one, Sylvia brings back some good, keep us, keep us on that. Uh, Juvenile Justice Advisory Board?
I would like to stay on that.
There's Graham and Justin, uh, anybody else? Interested? Stay with Graham and Justin, if I'm hearing none. Stormwater Advisory Board? I've been on that since its inception, it's...
Sounds like a yes to me.
If anybody wants it, it's a very exciting board to be on, uh, did I hear anybody wanting to be on that? Change is always good. All right, all right, so it looks like the only change we had was, uh, um, NERC, Redstone's gonna go on there, and Graham took herself off EMA, so I just, um, I'll, we'll go, if everybody's good with that, just all in favor of those, uh, our, our appointments, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, all right, we have it. E911 Policy Board? You know, I went to one or two of them, but if somebody else wants to jump on that and replace the President, it's fine with me.
I'll do that.
All right, you can, uh, jump on that.
Yeah, I'll be on it.
By all means, on the E911 Policy Board. I don't know if they need a letter from me or something, as the President of the Council, just let me know if they need something appointing you. All right. Porter County Redevelopment Commission, it's, again, usually the President of the Council, and I think this is where we get into our citizen appointment, beginning of that, so just by virtue of office, I sit on that, and then we do have a, um, a citizen appointment. Currently, it's Don Ensign on that, looks like we had a couple other applicants, Julie Georgie and Jake, um, I apologize, McAvoy.
A park director, superintendent.
So, um...
I do know that Don did, uh, contact me, and, um, he did say he wanted to remain on that at the council.
So one-year appointment, so...
I'd make a motion that we use Jake McAvoy. I didn't say that right, did I? You did? Make a motion that we appoint Jake to the, uh, Peace Porter County Redevelopment.
There's a motion.
Wait, I'll also make a motion that we be, uh, Don.
There's a motion for Jake and a motion for Don on the floor, any other, the other, uh, motions on the citizen appointments, the Redevelopment Commission?
Do we, uh, is it driven by a party? Like, do we have to, is it be a Democrat or a Democrat? I don't believe so. I don't, I checked the statute before the meeting today, and I don't believe so for this particular...
I don't believe so either, yeah. All right, so then, um, can we get a, um, roll call on that, Madam Auditor, so we just say who you want to vote for?
Mike Brookner?
McAvoy.
Sylvia Graham?
Don.
Rick Sims?
Don.
Redstone?
McAvoy.
Andy Bozak?
Jake!
Mike Justin?
Uh, Don Ensign.
Jeremy Rivas?
Uh, Don Ensign. All right.
Four for Don and three for Jake.
All right, keep moving right along. Um, the ABC Alcohol Beverage Commission, looks like...
I'll make the motion for Tom Swyheart.
Swyheart is our current appointment, and nobody else wanted it.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor of, um, Tom Swyheart?
Aye.
Um, staying on the ABC Board, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign. Um, BZA, is that, that's not up, so why is that? That's not up, all right, so... Let me see, so, so just go through that, so this, all right, so then, Pita Boa would be the next one?
I nominate Hannah True Blood.
I nominate David Androvich.
Let me go down here, shoo, shoo, all right, sorry, guys. So there was a nomination for Hannah and a nomination for David for, um, Pita Boa. Hannah is our current one. So any other nominations? No, can't, there's only two that applied, so Madam Auditor, if you could run down it once again for us?
Redstone?
Uh, David Androvich.
Rick Sims?
Hannah.
Sylvia Graham?
Hannah True Blood.
Mike Brookner?
Androvich.
Andy Bozak?
Uh, David. Androvich.
Mike Justin?
Uh, David Androvich.
Jeremy Rivas?
Uh, Hannah True Blood.
Four to three, four for Jake.
Mr. President, sir, if I may, I, the only caveat to that is, the statute requires that our appointment be a certified appraiser, I just wanna make sure that whoever, that, who we voted was a certified appraiser, I believe that she is, or he is, rather, is that?
CPA.
Okay.
Well, I think those two different things.
I don't know, that's what I'm asking. I have no idea.
The council can vote to not have that requirement, but the statute does require...
I'm not sure we've ever followed that requirement.
Uh, I, 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 yeah, I'm aware.
You're just finding requirements, huh?
I, yeah.
Maybe not that we followed it, I wasn't aware of it.
Yeah.
Well, is Hannah a certified appraiser?
I believe she is, she's a realtor.
The license...
But that's a real question, that's different.
Sue, can you shed some light on that by chance?
Yes, the Pita Boa Board is a...
Can't hear her.
Can you come up, Matt, yeah?
It is recorded, so we need you on a mic, something, sorry.
The Pita Boa Board is a three-member board, one of which needs to be a Level Two Appraiser Assessor. Currently, that person is Nancy Colasa, who is appointed by the Commissioners.
So you think that's...
So we only need one, we only need one member to be a, a Level Two.
As long as there's one, I think we're fine.
That's correct. That, I mean, that, that meets the statute, yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Sue.
All right. Thank you. Carry on. All right, so, um... Next one is the Chasterton Economic Development, right? Um, this is the, um, we just did this, you guys, um, because they wanted to reappoint, um, Lloyd Kittredge, so we just did this last month. So I would just say that, you know, we reappoint for an entire year, if you guys don't mind, and this is the only applicant.
We need to vote on it?
I would say so, yeah.
I make a motion.
Yeah, I'd make a motion.
Motion second for, to reappoint Lloyd Kittredge for the entire 2023 year. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign. Pass, uh, Porter, EDC, Margot, um, yeah, I apologize, Ma, Machnick? Machnick? So, it, weirdly, and I don't know how that got it, um, term ends two, one, 2003, I don't think there's any reason for that, so if we can maybe get a motion to reappoint her for the entire, entirety of this year, to get that back on.
Motion to approve, uh, Margot.
Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, Valpo EDC, Patrick McGinley.
But did you adjust the term ends date? Do you wanna change that, so it's the normal?
Yeah, that's what, yeah, that's what I said, yes.
That's what you made a motion?
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the point of the motion, yeah, for the beginning and for the entirety of this year, yep.
I'll make the motion to, uh, appoint Patrick McGinley, Appraiser EDC.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All the same sign, all right, perfect, yes, those would be for the entirety of the year, so... All right, I think that's all of our citizens. Joy, can you get those letters out to, um, our citizen appointments?
Yes.
And, you know, make certain that the, these ED, you know, EDCs, I think that's what it was supposed to be on Chasterton, that it's for, you know, the entire year of 2023.
Okay.
And then, um, uh, with, uh, Hannah, can you just send her a letter, letting her know thank you for your service, and then make sure to send a letter to David, let him know?
Okay.
So liaisons, you guys, um...
Oh, we're on the wrong ones.
What are we missing, anything? So here's the liaison list, you guys, this is, the liaison is as good as you guys make it, so we'll go through this, I mean, you guys see it? Um, I'll just read them off if somebody wants, I mean, obviously, uh...
I'm gonna be off of adult probation.
I don't know if Eric ever got on any of them, I think, I see Pop Rod's name still on here, God bless his soul, so I'll, I'll run through them, but, uh, you know, I don't think we made the adjustments when Eric came on after Bob passed, so, but, adult probation, currently it's Bozak and Graham.
I'm off.
What do you mean, Sylvia? You have to explain this. So somebody else want...
I'm pulling back a little bit.
Going back, pulling back, so, does somebody else wanna jump on that with Bozak? We'll move on, I mean, you guys, anybody wants to jump in at any point in time, though, it's not...
You left me on there, right?
Yes.
You can leave me on there.
Airport, Bozak and Sims.
Mm-hmm.
Animal Shelter, Justin and Sims. Jump in, Red, wherever you wanna jump in, Anabuse, Graham and Sims.
I got my spot, Jeremy. I'm just waiting.
Well, gotcha. Assessor, what do you mean off?
Well, Anabuse may not be lasting very much longer either, but, yeah, just to let you know.
All right, Assessor, Graham and Rivas. Auditor, um, I apologize, Auditor, Graham, Rivas and Sims.
You can be on that one myself.
Yeah, you can knock me off that.
You wanna be knocked off?
Yeah.
Was that you, Red?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Take off, uh, Sims and add Red. Circuit Court, Justin and Sims, I think all the courts are Justin and Sims. Clerk, Graham and Rivas. Commissioners, Justin, which right now it's, uh, Justin and Rivas. Um, Convention Center, Convention Recreation Visitors, Rivas and Sims. Coroner, Justin and Sims, E91 Public Safety, Graham, Rivas and Sims. Election Board, Bozak, Graham and Rivas. Emergency EMA, Brookner, Graham and Sims. Expo, Justin and Sims, yips.
I see, yeah, EMA, you're not on EMA anymore, right?
Take off Graham on EMA, so it's Brookner and Sims.
Okay.
Expo.
Publics E911, you can knock me off of that.
E911, take off Sims.
You're a liaison to everybody, I like that. No!
You will?
Yeah.
So E911 would be, uh, take myself off there, Graham and Brookner?
No, I'm not on, uh, nine.
So we're not, we're not gonna allow you to get off everything, Sylvia, it's just not gonna happen.
Okay.
I'm just kidding, Sylvia, would you like to be off of that one?
Um, actually, I'll stay on it.
Okay.
You're convincing me now the other way.
Perfect. You're a foundation here, Sylvia. So, Election Board, uh, Bozak, Graham, Rivas, what did I say, so EMA, Brookner and Sims, Expo Center, Justin and Sims, Extension, Graham and Sims, Facilities, Rivas and Sims, Family Youth and Service Bureau, Justin and Rivas, Health Department, Graham, Justin and Sims.
That's, I'd like to get on that one, if someone wants to get off.
I'll get off, but that's one I would have liked to stay on.
Is the highway next?
Yes.
I'll take, I'll be on the highway if anybody...
I'll, I'll come off a highway.
I'd like to be on that.
All right, so Health Department, are Sylvia or Red, or what's, we just can't have four, right, if, if you guys are showing up to a meeting? So there's Justin, Sims, and who on Health Department?
Me.
Graham, you all right with that, Red?
Yes, I am all right.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Um, Highway, Graham, Pop Rod and Sims, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'll, I'll come off, and cause Red wants to come on.
And so Graham's off too?
Yes.
So...
I'll do Highway with Red.
Red and...
And Andy.
Um, HR, Graham and Justin, IT, Bozak, Rivas, Sims, 4D Court, Justin and Sims, um, Jail, Sheriff and Sheriff's Garage, Brookner, Rivas and Sims.
Do that if someone wants to get off.
Yep, I'll get off. Stone, uh, Juvenile Detention, Brookner and Justin, Juvenile Probation, Brookner and Justin, Memorial Op, excuse me, Memorial Opera House, Graham and Sims, Museum, Graham and Sims, Opportunity Enterprises, Rivas and Sims, Parks, Brookner, Graham and Justin.
I'll get off that.
I'll, uh, if I can get on, Parks?
Yeah, I'll get on.
Add Sims. Take Graham away, Plan Commission, Building Department, we just got Sims.
Need someone for that?
Uh, if you want.
You can leave it at Sims, if you need someone, you can throw me on there.
Bozak? Porter Township Assessor, Bozak, Bozak? Do I, like, the Ak, is it Bozak or Ak? Do I, like, the Ak, is it Bozak or Ak?
Ak, there's no E K. If you came to the Christmas light show, you would know.
You have Christmas lights?
Bozak.
Porter's Township Assessor, Bozak and Rivas. Porter Stark, Graham and Sims. Print Shop, we don't have that anymore, right?
Yeah, we do. That was me. It's still I T S.
Sims. Prosecutor, Jessen and Rivas. Public Defender, Jessen and Rivas. Recorder, Bozak and Sims. Recycling and Waste, Graham and Sims. Soil and Water, Graham and Jessen. Development and Stormwater Management, Rivas. Surveyor, Graham and Rivas. Treasurer, Graham and Rivas. Veteran Services, Graham and Jessen.
You want to stand Veterans?
If you want to get on it, that's fine.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay.
Voter Registration, Bozak, Graham and Rivas. Weights and Measures, Graham and Sims. Is that it?
You want to get off Weights and Measures? I'll do Weights and Measures if you want to get off.
You're talking to me?
Talking to me?
If not, perfectly fine with you.
Actually, it's fine. Red, you need to get on as many as you can. That's how you activate it. No, that's fine, go ahead.
All right.
And I'll, wait, I'll go on with Bozak for the adult probation.
All right.
Red, did you have any other specific interests noted that you were interested in or?
No, I think Vice President's enough. I think I'm doing just fine.
Trust it. Plenty.
All right, all right, that takes care of us. Joy, were you able to keep up?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. All right, I think that's it. Did I miss anything? Where is my agenda? Lost and shuffled.
Here.
I got it. Here it is. I'm good, I'm good, I think I'm good. All right, Attorneys' Report?
Nothing to report today. Today's a pretty simple meeting, obviously. I just wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to serve again and welcome Red.[1530.71]